Lex or Ruth, can you hear the room?
We can hear you.
I am the room.
Okay, yes.
I am the room.
Perfect.
Susan.
Hello, this is Susan.
Lex.
We heard Susan.
Perfect.
And Rob, if you do want to sit at the table, I don't know if you noticed, but we do have some extra space there. Sit at that very end.
Yeah, I mean, you like got your laptop perched on your legs.
We're short a couple of commissioners today, can we make it?
No, no.
If you want, we can put like a little sign that says audience or something.
Except for nobody can see it, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay, it's not that.
It's not that one.
Good morning, am I broadcasting?
Good morning, Jenna.
Sounds like you can hear me.
Say, do we have sound? I don't hear anything.
We do, we hear you.
Okay, very good, I hear you now too, thank you.
So, welcome everyone who is here and attending, we will do a quick roll call of the commissioners. And then I will discuss some procedural matters and we will get started, so. Becky, can you do a roll call of the commissioners? Or Molly?
Yes. Commissioner Burke.
I, here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Wissindes Gutierrez.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
Commissioner Newell.
Here.
Commissioner McCully.
Here.
All right. So, thank you everyone for being here, both commissioners and and our guests. This is the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Rulemaking Public Hearing, and Susan Myers is the Executive Director for the Commission. As we get started, I just want to explain some procedural matters. There, we understand there are a number of people present who've registered to provide comment on one or more of the proposed rules. After each rule is presented, the presiding officer will invite public comment on that rule. There will also be an opportunity for public comment at the end of the presentation. If it's more general comment. The time limit for each public comment is three minutes, the time limit will be displayed on the screen. If you want to comment, but you did not register, and so you're not attending via Zoom, please email us at rulemaking@ogec.org.gov. And our staff will assist you. If you submitted exhibits by the deadline, they will be available on screen during your public comments. Any other exhibits can be submitted as written comments. If you want to submit written comments, you may do so by emailing your written comments. Again, to rulemaking@ogec.org.gov. The deadlines for submission of written comments is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 3rd. This public hearing is being recorded. And the reporting will be made available on the Commission's website following the conclusion of the hearing. So before we get started with the first rule, we need to have the Commission appoint Commissioner Thompson as the Presiding Officer. As you know, both our Chair and Vice Chair are absent. And as Commissioner Thompson is here, present in the room. I would ask the Commission to appoint him as Presiding Officer, and he can hold over. So, can we get a motion?
Commissioner Payne is trying to.
Welcome, Commissioner Payne.
I saw move that Commissioner Thompson be selected as the Presiding Officer for this hearing.
We need it, we need a vote, so.
Commissioner McCully.
Hi.
Commissioner Newell.
Hi.
Commissioner Mason.
I.
Wissindes Gutierrez.
I.
Commissioner Thompson.
I.
Commissioner Payne.
I.
Commissioner Burke.
I.
Motion pass seven zero.
Very good, so you are now the Presiding Officer.
All right, thank you very much. I have a brief statement to read, and then it sounds like we'll get into the reading of the rules and the public comment of each one. I am excited that the reading, the quote reading of the rules is a reading of the summary of the rules, not every, not word for word, so that's a good thing, anyway. So here we go. The Oregon Government Ethics Commission is holding this public hearing as part of the rulemaking process for the adoption of administrative rules for public meetings law. In this public hearing, the Commission will hear statements or comments by those present who wish to provide public comments. The Presiding Officer or any Commissioner may question or seek clarification from those submitting public comments. The proposed rules include the adoption of new rules to provide guidance and clarification regarding the requirements of Oregon Public Meetings Law. The proposed rules also include the amendment of two existing rules, including an update to the Commission's penalty matrix. The rulemaking process has included a series of meetings with a Rules Advisory Committee. The proposed rules were published in the Secretary of State's Bulletin on August 1st, 2024. Written public comment on the proposed rules may be submitted through September 3rd, 2024. The Commission will meet to consider adoption of these rules on September 20th, 2024. And with that, if there are no questions. We will proceed to the first item on our agenda, which is the reading of amended rule 199-008-0015.
Oregon Government Ethics Commission Guidelines on Sanctions. Amendments to this rule add the public meetings law to the penalty matrix. And Table A removes the deduction for relying on O G E C advice from the penalty matrix. And adds a deduction for actions to prevent violations. And Table B adds letter of education as a sanction.
Are there any questions from Commissioners on this rule? Hearing none, public comment?
Yes.
Sorry, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just have a question about what the purpose of removing the deduction for conversations with the or for relying on O JEC advice from the penalty matrix. And I had understood that relying on O JEC advice was something that we had considered important in deducting penalties previously, so I just had a question on that.
Yes. The the explanation there is that the provisions in our advice statutes themselves in 244.280 282 and 284. The law itself provides that if someone is acting in reliance on O JEC, in good faith reliance on our advice, that realistically, we can't give anything more than a letter of that. So, so the deduction in the penalty matrix in my six years had never really been used because they automatically get the credit for acting on our advice as part of the statute. So during the rulemaking hearing, that was pointed out to us that it shouldn't be a question of whether they need a deduction for relying on our advice, it should be automatic that they that the sanction for a violation when they were relying on our advice would be limited to a letter of that.
Thank you, Executive Director, I guess my question is, would there any would there be any situation where there would be a deduction that would be less than a letter of education? My understanding, just to clarify, is the deduction would apply to monetary penalties, correct, and that's why you're you're removing the deduction language?
The deduction is so on the penalty matrix, the addition and deduction of points is to to determine the total points that get applied in Table B. So, in Table A, we add points for numbers of violations and amount of money and all that. We take points away for, were you acting on advice of counsel or on agency policy or those things? And then we apply whatever the total point is to Table B, which is the table that says you're going to get something ranging from a letter of that on the low side, all the way up to the maximum financial penalty. Having the deduction in for O JEC advice in Table A really makes no sense because whether it's there or not, if they were acting on our advice and we get to Table B, all we can do is provide the letter of that.
Thank you, Executive Director, that answers my question.
Are there any further questions? All right, seeing none, is there any public comment on this rule?
We had no registered public comment for this particular role.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the room who wishes, in the room or on Zoom, who wishes to speak on this? All right. We are now moving on to the reading of amended rule 199-040-0027.
Employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent under ORS 192.6602A and compliance with ORS 192.6607D. The amendments to this rule clarify the procedures required by ORS 192.6607D prior to convening an executive session under ORS 192.6602A.
Are there any questions from Commissioners on this rule? Hearing none, is there any public comment on this rule?
We had two people registered for public comment, the first would be Bill Urteil.
Mr. Urteil, can you unmute yourself, and now is your time to now's your three minutes to tell us what you think.
He's on earlier.
He's on.
He doesn't seem to be at his chair anymore.
Oh, okay, I see his computer is on, but.
Would be like for Jonathan Carr to go first.
Sure.
Okay, this will take me a second because he had an exhibit.
Mr. Carr, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, as soon as we get your exhibit pulled up, we will, we'll love to hear what you have to say.
Much obliged, thank you.
All right, with that, please introduce yourself for the record, sir, and your three minutes is beginning now.
Thank you, my name is Jonathan Carr, I'm the City Attorney for the City of the Dawls. Next slide, please. I wanted to provide some testimony here today connected with this proposed amendment to 199-040-271. I I made these slides, and I have a couple other testimony lined up for later today, but I wanted to flag a couple things that I was concerned with. And I wanted to offer some solutions because I didn't find it particularly helpful to just to flag issues that I that I saw without also contributing to the process in an interactive way. And so at the very top, i- if there's an opportunity to make it a little bit bigger, I'd appreciate it, whoever's controlling the the slides, I copy pasted the proposed amendment, thank you very much. And it is in italics at the very top of the page, which the clock is obscuring. And thank you. And so I wanted to mention that the proposed amendment here indicates reference to a different administrative rule that's already been effective since December 30th, 2021. The proposed amendment today indicates that as provided in that rule, compensation including salaries and benefits may not be discussed or negotiated in executive session. But I wanted to note that that administrative rule is as follows, compensation including salaries and benefits must not be disclosed or negotiated during an executive session under ORS 192, 2A, B, or I. 2A refers to employment of a public officer, B refers to discipline of a public officer, and I refers to performance evaluations. And so my concern was, as indicated in the green box, it's probably a drafting oversight. The plain language of the proposed amendment here seems to restrict discussions of compensations in all executive sessions, however, the administrative rule that's been in effect since December 30th of 2021 plainly restricts that that discussion of compensation to executive sessions noticed under 2A, 2B, or I. And so as drafted, I, it's my understanding that the proposed amendment exceeds that restriction. And so a solution there is very straightforward. It clarifies, and I added it in bolded, underlined italics, that OAR 1994020 sub three restricts the discussion of compensation in executive session only under those three permissible purpose statutes, 2A, 2B, or I. There are other executive session permissible purpose statutes that seem to allow discussions of compensations, most notably 2F, examine public records, or depending on the advice of of counsel. And so I just wanted to flag that for the Commission, and I think it hurts time.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for this witness? All right, thank you very much, is Mr. Urteil back? Do we know? Okay. Mr. Urteil, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
All right, thank you for being here today, sir, this is your time to address the Commission. Please introduce yourself for the record, and you have three minutes.
So my name is Bill Urteil, I actually live in Southern Oregon. I'm currently on two boards, so I'm frequently the in public meetings. And I'm looking at the proposed rules and the changes here. I find them really tough in being a quality public servant, okay? They're they're so doggone restrictive and burdensome. And I belong to a small rural fire department. Because of the way they're crafted, sometimes we have to have two or three public meetings a week, okay? Because employment situations come up or operational situations come up. And we have no leadway, and it's really tough when you're a public servant and you're not getting paid for any time that you constantly have to quickly carve out time for a public meeting when it seems to me that most of the things are so doggone reasonable that the the members of the organization, ours happen to be. members of the organization, ours happen to be a board of directors could reach a consist consensus and then it could be ratified in a public meeting. I'm not against not sharing the decision publicly. I what I'm terribly concerned about is how it's now crafted, so it's so hard to get any business done. Especially especially if you're a a small organization like we are. And so I'm going to reread the rules and 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 the amendments, and then my plan is to use the opportunity for public comment up until, is it September?
Yes, September third.
So that's my comments. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for being here, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Hurtel from the commission?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on this rule? Oh, yes, here in the room?
The only other.
Oh, please, could you please identify yourself for the record?
You bet. Rob Ovett, Senior Assistant County Counsel, Washington County. I represented the county lawyers on the Rules Advisory Committee. And this will just take ten seconds. I just want to echo what City Attorney Carr said and join in his comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for this witness? All right. Any further public comment on this rule? All right, we'll now move on to the reading of proposed rule one nine nine zero four zero 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 six zero.
Prohibition on making decisions in executive session. This rule clarifies the prohibition on making decisions in executive session.
Are there any questions from commissioners on this rule at this point? All right, are there? Is there any public comment on this rule?
We had three people registered for comment.
Okay.
We had Mr. Bill Hurtel. And then we had Christie Teets and then Jonathan Karen.
Okay. I guess we'll take him in that order. Mr. Hurtel, do you wish to speak on this rule? You're on mute, sir.
My question to the committee here is, why why are we proposing this rule?
Yes, so I'll address that. The purpose of this rule was simply the prohibition on making a this final decision in an exec session is in the statute. The purpose of this rule was to provide clarification that a governing body may reaches consensus while in exec session prior to coming out and making its decision or vote in the public session. So it was a way of putting into the rule what the advice in the Attorney General's Public Records and Meeting manual was.
Thank you for the clarification, and I'm okay with the way the rule is proposed.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Hurtel?
No.
All right, who's next on our public testimony list?
We had Christie Teets.
Christie Teets, are you on on the Zoom?
I am present, and thank you. I've been able to do a little more research on this myself and have answered my my.
Can you introduce yourself for the record?
Sorry, Christie Teets, City Recorder, City of Malala.
Thank you.
So I I have been able to answer my own question, and so I'd just like to thank the body for an opportunity to present a yield my time.
All right, thank you very much. And now I think, what, Mr. Kara?
Yes, and he does have an exhibit, so he needs to.
Okay.
While I pull that up.
Please bear with us as we get that exhibit loaded, and then we'll go from there. All right, please, please give us your name again for the record, and you're on.
Certainly, thank you. My name is Jonathan Karam, the city attorney for the city of the Dawls. I have a very similar slide here, and I promise I only I'm only intending on testifying one more time today after this. And so the, as indicated by Mr. Hurtel and your executive director, there is already a statutory provision connected with this. It's in among public law practitioners, it's affectionately termed the final decision prohibition. Your proposed adoption of this rule here today seems superfluous, and I I am concerned that the plain language of the rule draws a distinction between a decision and a vote. The statute already defines decision, and that definition of decision includes the word vote. But vote is not defined in the statute or in these proposed administrative rules. According to the Department of Justice's Public Meetings Manual, the purpose of the final decision prohibition is to allow the public to know the result of discussions, sort of echoing what Mr. Urchell mentioned earlier. And taking a formal vote in open session typically satisfies that requirement, even if the public vote merely confirms a tentative decision reached in executive session. And so the concern here is that we are drawing a distinction between what the statute defines as a decision, which includes the term the vote, without offering any meaningful distinction between them. In fact, the word vote or votes are part of decisions, and just wanted to flag for the commission. ORS one ninety two six one oh sub one relates to decisions upon upon which a vote of a governing body is required. The statute, again, doesn't doesn't offer any definition for the word vote, and so there are very, very commonly times in executive session where we can take informal polls among governing bodies to get some informal consensus or direction in situations where a decision of the governing body isn't required. My my proposed solution, I think, is a simple one, and I I encourage the commission to consider it here today. And it's in bolded under and strike through the proposed OAR one ninety nine zero four zero 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 six zero, just simply strike or vote from both both instances where that appears. Thank you very much to the commission for its time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for this witness? All right, are there? Is there any other public comment on this rule? Yes, sir.
Good comments. Again, Bravo that Senior Assistant County Counsel from Washington County on behalf of the county lawyers. Echo with City Attorney just said on behalf of county attorneys. And then second, just an overall note, because I'll just put it in the record one time. I do have an overall concern about many of these rules in the sense that I I I fear that sometimes when we try to codify existing case law and attorney general opinions, we may have undertended consequences. This is just one example of many throughout the rules. As I referenced during the rack process, my preference would have been to narrowly draft rules around the two issues that the legislature specifically enacted, those being the grievance process and the new training requirement, and I won't say that again after each rule I'm done. And then just final comment, I thank you for your process because Jonathan's having to do all the talking today. But I don't feel guilty because I think I had to do most of the talking with the rack.
Division of Labor, we like it.
Yes.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Ovett? All right, anybody else for public testimony on this rule? All right, moving on to a reading of proposed rule one nine nine oh five oh zero 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 five.
Definitions. This rule provides definitions for terms used in public, in the public meetings law and in these rules, such as communicate, communication, decision-making process, deliberate, discussion, intermediary, quorum, and serial electronic written communication.
Is there any public testimony on this rule?
None.
Is there anybody either on the Zoom or in the room that wishes to make public comments on this rule? And any questions from commissioners on this rule? All right. We will now move on to a reading of proposed rule one nine nine zero five zero 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 one zero.
Governing body subject to the public meetings law. This rule provides guidance on what governing bodies are subject to the public meetings law.
Do any commissioners have questions about this rule? Is there any public testimony for this rule?
We do have Mr. Bill Hurtel.
All right, Mr. Mr. Hurtel, welcome back. Now is your time to address the commission on this rule. Please state your name for the record before you begin. Oh, I think you're still on mute, sir.
I'm Bill Erdl with in Southern Oregon. I have no no complaints about the way this rule is written at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for this witness? All right, anybody else signed up to testify?
He was the only one.
Sir?
Yeah. Again, Rob Ovett, Senior Assistant County Counsel from Washington County, and I promise this last time I'll say this generally. Again, my concern here is we're attempting to define things that have been defined in case law and statute over the years. And my concerns are not specific, they're more general, that we may be creating undertended consequences.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Ovett? All right, and the other moving on to reading a proposed rule one nine nine zero five zero 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 one five.
Meeting subject to the public meetings law. This rule provides guidance on what meetings are subject to the public meetings.
Are there any questions from commissioners on this one? All right, do we have anybody signed up to speak on this one?
We have two people registered. We have Christie Teets and we have Jonathan Karen.
All right. Christie, are you? Are you still with us?
I am, and I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, is it? Am I saying this right? Is it Kara or Kara? I want to make sure I get this right.
Commissioner Thompson, that's a great question. Jonathan Kara is just fine, although I don't believe I I don't believe I did submit comment on this one.
Oh, we we may have the right, the wrong.
Did I?
We we may have it wrong on our end. We're checking.
The last, the last comment, well, the last testimony I was wishing to offer today would be on proposed adoption of one ninety nine zero five zero 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 five zero sub four, which is titled Public Attendance in Meeting Location.
One five, we're on one five.
Oh, one five, did I skip ahead?
It's the they're out of order at the top.
Oh, okay, so.
Our apologies.
No worries.
I was going.
All right. So is there anyone else wishing to give public comment on the rule ending in zero zero one five?
Actually, I I would like to comment.
Sir, Mr. Hurtel, you're, please reintroduce yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
So my name is Bill Hurtel. I'm in Southern Oregon. The the meetings list are regular meetings, special meetings, merge meetings, and executive sessions. Frequently, I'm involved with organizations where they have workshops. Are workshops excluded from this definition of of a meeting?
Susan?
So if you will look at the rule, a workshop, some groups call them workshops, some call them work sessions, some call them planning sessions. Whatever you call that, if a governing body is meeting to receive information relating to something that could come before them for decision or deliberation, it is a public meeting, so it's either part of a regular meeting or it's more likely a special meeting. So it's a it falls within the public meetings law, and it has to follow all of the rules that apply for public meetings.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for this witness? All right, anybody else wishing to give testimony on this rule? All right. We'll now move on to the reading of proposed rule one nine nine zero five zero 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 two zero.
Serial communications prohibited. This rule clarifies when serial communications among a quorum of governing body members are prohibited.
Do we have any questions from commissioners on this rule? All right, is there anyone signed up to testify on this rule?
Not for twenty.
Not for twenty. All right, is there anybody in the room who wishes to give testimony on this? Hearing none, we will continue on to the reading of proposed rule one nine nine zero five zero 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 four zero.
Notice requirements. This rule provides guidance for satisfying the public meetings law notice requirements.
Are there questions from commissioners on this proposed rule? Is there anyone signed up to testify on this or give comment on this rule?
Bill Hurtel is registered.
Mr. Hurtel, this is your time to offer your testimony on this rule. Please reintroduce yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Okay, I think I'm still on the video, so.
Yep, we can hear you.
I'm Bill Erdl. I'm in Southern Oregon. The notice to the public seemed it's always been vague in terms of how we go about it. And I'm looking at the rule here. What we've gravitated in in a couple of my organizations is is the thinking, if we publish the notice on our website, that satisfies the requirement. Is that is that how this rule is written, or are we negligent in doing something else?
Mr. Hurtel, no. The rule is not requiring that it be published on your website, but that's certainly a reasonable thing to do. What the rule is setting forth is that whatever form of notice you give, it needs to meet the time limit. So for a regular meeting, forty eight hours is would be the minimum for a special meeting, twenty four hours. And that it must be reasonably calculated to provide actual notice to the general public as well as specific notice to the media or other people who are interested in getting notice.
So I have a follow-up observation, if that's okay, regarding item B, sub paragraph A, which is interested persons list, mailing list, or other list of persons. We actually have a couple of org or people or media that that has wants to be notified through a a list of people. And if we do that by mail, it's not practical, okay? If we are going to comply and we just put it on our website, there's probably in forty eight hours, a chance that they will miss that. So my question is, there's this item method, item B, sub item A. If if we just put it on our website, have we met that condition, or is there some other next step that we should be doing?
If having it on your website is one, notice to the public at large, the general public, if it is reasonably calculated that the specific media members who've asked for notice would see it on your website, that would suffice. It might be a better practice to also simply email it to those media members, but though that would be a decision for your governing body to make itself.
So so just a follow-up comment, we we actually have one person who wishes to be notified through a mailing list who has notified us that they do not use the internet. And so you know, we can pretend, if that's the right word, when we have an agenda to put it in an envelope and mail it, but in fact, they probably won't receive it until after the meeting may have occurred. And I I don't know what we should do in that situation.
I would encourage you maybe to give us a call after this hearing is is over, and we can walk through some of those options.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Erto from the commission? All right, anybody else wishing to give public comment on the rule ending in zero zero four zero? All right, moving on to the reading of proposed rule 1990500050.
Public attendance, meeting locations. This rule clarifies the requirements for public attendance and access at meetings.
Are there any questions from the commission on this one? All right, is there any public comment on this rule?
We have Christie Teets and Jonathan.
All right. Ms. Teets, are you wanting to give comment on this rule?
Good morning, Christie Teets, City of Malala. So I, I think more I'm looking for some clarification. There, there's an awful lot that goes along with this rule, and our city is following many of the the rules that are listed here. However, we are not using Zoom at this point. So our, our meetings are live streamed through Facebook and YouTube. And I guess mostly what I'm curious to know is if we are covering the requirements.
Again, I think that might be a better conversation for outside of this hearings, because I would need to gather more information on what exactly you're doing. I'd be more than happy to schedule a call with you on it.
Excellent.
But there is nothing in the rule that says you must use Zoom or you must use Teams.
Right, okay. Ultimately, that's what I was hoping to clarify. Thank you.
Any questions for this witness? All right, moving on, do we have a slide for this, Mr. Cara?
I believe so.
All right, with that pulled up, and if you could reintroduce yourself for the record, and as soon as it's pulled up, we'll start your three minutes.
You bet. Thank you again to the commission. I promise this is the last slide. I really do hate PowerPoint. My name is Jonathan Kara, City Attorney for the City of the Dells. I felt compelled to provide testimony here. This is specifically concerning subsection four of this proposed rule, and the gist of it is the Ethics Commission is intending on adopting this rule, which requires governing bodies to provide virtual access to news media representatives at executive sessions. If anybody is using virtual access at an executive session, I just wanted to flag a couple of things. Firstly, if you look under my note right there in the middle of the page, the statute with which this rule is intending on augmenting is, is in front of you. I added some emphasis. I just underlined a few words, notably excluding executive sessions. It seems to be very intentional, I think very reasonably so. And so, just to reiterate what that statute says, all meetings held by a governing body of a public body excluding executive sessions must provide news media and the general public access to attend by telephone, virtual means. I just wanted to mention as well, some of the history here. In 2020, the legislature adopted HB 4212 in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And it, and it says effectively what, what is being said here, for any executive session at which the media are permitted to attend, whether conducted in person or using electronic or virtual means, the governing body must provide a means for the media to attend virtually. Section two of that same House bill indicated that that House bill would be repealed thirty days after the declaration of the end of the emergency by the governor. And for the record, the executive order number 22-03, which was issued on April 1st, 2022, terminated that order. And so the, the automatic repeal of HB 4212 followed. Please, next slide. And so my concern here is as follows. If the public meetings law already compels governing bodies to provide virtual attendance options for news media at executive sessions, then section one, sub three of that House bill would not have been necessary. And so let's put it another way. Without any other qualification, the public meetings law does not compel governing bodies to provide virtual attendance options for news media at executive sessions. If the legislature had intended to so compel, it would have done that, or it would not have included a sunset provision in 4212. You know, typically for the rest of my previous testimony, I've offered, you know, very simple solutions. Here, it's not so simple. When this rule was presented to your RAC, committee members representing AOC, the League of Oregon Cities, and the Oregon Newspaper Publisher, Publisher Association, they flagged this amendment's overreach to your rules writer and rules coordinator. Commission staff offered no substantive response to those concerns, other than a rushed indication. The Oregon Department of Justice attorneys believe otherwise. And I'll just wrap up here with my, my final thought. This proposed administrative rule, which seems to misapply, misinterpret, or otherwise ignore the statute, AKA the law, appears to plainly exceed the commission's authority. It's unclear to me how to provide a solution other than urging you not to adopt it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your testimony. Are there any questions for this witness? All right, I see, is, are there, is there anybody signed up to testify?
We did have one third person, Patricia Mulville.
Okay, I see that she has her hand up, and as does Mr. Erto, so we'll get to, I'm sorry if I, if I butcher your name, but Patty Mulvahill. Please introduce yourself for the record. Tell us where you are, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and you actually are probably one of the few people who have said it properly. My name's Patty Mulvahill. I'm the Executive Director for the League of Oregon Cities. Like Jonathan Karras, I'm going to speak specifically about subsection four of this proposed rule. The one that essentially provides that media are permitted to attend via telephone, video, or electronic methods if a governing body member themselves attends. The League of Oregon Cities objects strongly to this proposed new rule on several grounds, and we have previously stated our objections to these during some of the initial rulemaking stages, but we wanted to go on the record today. We think, first of all, that the rule exceeds the statutory authority that's been granted to the OGC, and would arguably perhaps even be in direct opposition of the legislature's intent and will in regards to the overall statute. During the 2023 legislative session, a bill was proposed that would have essentially achieved the exact same goals of this proposed rule. That bill failed to move forward. The league is greatly troubled that a state agency would attempt to impose an obligation on cities, but the legislature itself chose not to do so. Secondly, we believe that the rule violates the home rule authority that's been granted to cities in Oregon, and I would note that it has also been granted to counties. The Constitution makes it clear that absent a clear and unambiguous legislative preemption, cities are entitled to conduct their business as they deem appropriate and necessary. The legislature has not defined what it means for media to attend our meetings. And as such, they also haven't told us what it means in terms of when they can or can't, or how they can or can't attend our meetings, which we believe under the Oregon Constitution and statutory provisions means that cities are entitled to make that determination themselves. We believe this rule exceeds both the constitutional and statutory authority the OGC has. If you set aside those legal concerns, we have some practical concerns. We don't believe that the rule is in fact the one that should be passed just simply for how it will be imposed. The Oregon Legislature has rightly acknowledged that there are aspects of city and county business that necessarily require the discussion of sensitive and confidential information. Some types of these discussions can include financial matters, security matters, personnel issues. And because of the sensitive and confidential nature, the legislature has rightly given cities and counties and special districts the ability to hold what would be called proverbial closed-door meetings, executive sessions. If we allow the media to attend these meetings virtually or technologically, cities have no assurance that the only person listening in on the meeting is in fact a member of the meeting. Anyone could be on the other side of that telephonic or virtual connection. This rule and practical implementation would be akin to the OGC requiring cities to hold an in-person executive session in a boardroom that has every door and every window open, meaning anybody who walks by could be privy to the discussions being held. The league urges the OGC to abandon the damaging overreach of this proposed rule. And thank you for your time today, and note we will be submitting additional written testimony next week.
Thank you very much. Is there any, are there any questions for this witness? All right, Mr. Erto, the floor is yours. Please, please reintroduce yourself for the record, and we'll hear your testimony.
Sure, thank you. My name is Bill Erto. I'm in Southern Oregon. And I'm looking at this, this rule about the media participating in executive sessions. And thinking about the electronic world that we live in, one of the organizations I'm involved in is pretty doggone small, okay? With limited budget, and some of this might seem like an unreasonable burden when the media always would have the option of attending in person. Secondly, I'm, I'm concerned about the security of the discussions that would go out, and we all know that once something gets on the internet, internet these days, unintended disclosures happen when it, when it goes out. And so I'm really concerned about this provision. And I guess what I could do is think about it and then comment during the comment period, but right now I'm not comfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there questions from commissioners for this witness? All right, I think Mr. Bovet here in the room has something he would like to add, so we'll get the computer down to him and open there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Rob Ovett, Senior Assistant County Counsel for Washington County on behalf of county lawyers. I'll just make it quick. I would like to echo the sentiments expressed by Mr. Cara and Ms. Mulvahill. Essentially, counties are in the same situation as cities in that regard. I also note, just for the record, that I did submit to staff the full legislative history described by Attorney Cara, as well as the executive orders issued by the governor during COVID that explain that particular history. And so it is my concern that this rule, specifically subsection four of this proposed rule, not only exceeds the authority of the commission, but actually flies in the face of legislative history. My, I suspect either through the Association of Oregon Counties or through individual counties, we'll submit additional comments to place all that in the record as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any questions from commissioners for this witness? All right, is there anyone else wishing to give testimony on the rule ending in zero zero five zero? Hearing none, we will move on to the reading of proposed rule 1990500055.
Public vote requirements. This rule provides guidance on the public vote requirement and the use of ballots.
Are there any questions from commissioners on this rule? Okay, do we have anybody signed up for public comment on this rule?
Yes, Bill.
Mr. Erto, the floor is yours. Please reintroduce yourself for the record, and we'll take your testimony on the rule ending in zero zero five five. Oh, I think you're on mute, sir.
My name is Bill Erto in Southern Oregon. I'd like to waive my time on this particular matter.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to give public comment on the rule ending in zero zero five zero? Oh, Mr. Bovet?
Hold up, let's, let's get the mic down next year so we can make sure we get this recorded.
Rob Bovet, Senior Assistant County Counsel, Washington County, on behalf of the county lawyers. I'll just make a real brief comment here about the last clause of subsection four, which says, each governing bodies, each governing body member's vote shall be announced during the meeting at which the vote occurred. This does not affect my current client, but it, it would affect one of my former clients. I believe that clause exceeds the scope of what's in the Attorney General's manual, which is reliant upon a, an Attorney General opinion, I believe, from 1977. So I would, I would urge you to possibly consider striking just that last clause, because I think it does exceed what current law requires, and it, it may alter the actions of certain bodies that are large, such as the general membership of the Association of Oregon Counties or the League of Oregon Cities. So I'll just put that bug in your ear. I think this exceeds current law.
So just, just to clarify for, for what I, you're okay with the first part, that if ballots are used, they shall identify the, the member who used the ballot?
Yes.
The problem comes after the "and."
Yeah, and, and I'll give a practical explanation. At the general membership meter, you know, this Association of Oregon Counties, they often take votes. Some are written on ballots, and that would essentially require us, not us, I say us, I don't know where to work there, would require them to, to read quite literally a hundred and twenty ballot results into the record for every vote they take. They can certainly do it, but it seems kind of mindless when it's all part of the record, the written record. So I just mentioned that, again, it doesn't affect my current client, because my current client has a board of five, and it would take two minutes to read that result, but a hundred and twenty is a bigger deal.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Bovet?
All right, is there anyone else wishing to give to the rule ending in zero zero five zero, or zero zero five five? Hearing none, we will now hear a reading of proposed rule 1990500060.
Minutes or recordings required. This rule clarifies the requirements for taking minutes or recordings of meetings.
Are there any questions from commissioners on this rule? Do we have anybody signed up to give comment on this rule? No one signed up. Is there anyone in the room wishing to weigh in on this one?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, please reintroduce yourself for the record, and we'll start your three minutes.
My name is Bill Erdo from Southern California, and I like the way this rule is written very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the, in the room wishing to give comment on this rule? All right, we'll now move on to the reading of proposed rule 1990500065.
State board or commission meetings held through telephone or electronic means, video and audio recordings. This rule provides guidance for state boards and commissions required to publish recordings of meetings.
Are there questions from members of the commission about this proposed rule? All right, is there anyone wishing to testify on or give comment on this rule?
We've got Bill and Christie registered for comment.
Okay. I'll just pick them in order that are on my screen. Mr. Erto, the, the floor is yours. Please reintroduce yourself for the record.
My name is Bill Erdo. I'm from Southern Oregon, and I have no comments on this proposed regulation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Christie Teets, do you wish to give comments on this one?
Hi, Christie Teets, no comment. Thank you, commission.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else either in the room or on Zoom wishing to weigh in on this rule? Hearing none, we will move on to a, a reading of proposed rule 1990500070.
Grievance process. This rule clarifies the process for submitting a written grievance alleging a public meetings law violation to a public body.
Are there questions from the commission on this rule? Hearing none, is there anyone wishing to give comment on this one?
We have Bill.
Mr. Erto, the floor is yours. Please reintroduce yourself for the record. Oh, I think you're on mute, sir.
My name is Bill Erdo. I'm in Southern Oregon. The, the process, I'm trying to think about clarifying it. The written grievance shall be submitted to a public body within thirty days from the date of the meeting where the alleged violation occurred. Is, is thirty days fair? That, that's my only question. It's, it seems like, you know, some of these organizations, we meet once a month, okay? And, and you know, we meet once a month, and it's thirty days before the minutes are published. And so the opportunity to spot if there was, was a alleged violation has almost expired by, by the time that you would have enough information in front of you to make a clear judgment. So I'm, I'm just questioning the thirty days. Thank you.
I think Susan's going to weigh in on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Erto. It, your recognition of that issue, it is an issue. The thirty days is set forth in statute. And so we can't change that. It would have to be a legislative fix. But you are correct that there are some situations where a member of the public or someone might not have the information in order to file the grievance. in order to file the grievance within the thirty days.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Urteil?
No questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to give comment on this rule? All right, moving on to a reading of proposed rule one nine nine zero five zero 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 seven five.
Complaints dismissal for failure to satisfy O R S one nine two point six eight five. This rule clarifies the commission's case opening and case handling procedures for cases alleging public meetings law violations.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission on this one? All right, is there anyone signed up to testify on this one?
We've got Bill.
Mr. Urteil, uh, the floor is yours. You're on mute, though.
Bill Erdl, Southern Oregon. Uh, I have no specific comments on this proposed regulation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else, uh, on Zoom or in the room wishing to give comment on the rule ending in zero zero seven five? Hearing none, we will now move on to the reading of proposed rule one nine nine zero five zero 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 eight zero.
Training requirements. This rule clarifies the mandatory training requirements in O R S one nine two point seven zero zero.
Is there anyone, is there, are, are there any questions from the commission on this rule? Anyone wishing to give public comment on this rule? But I don't, no one signed up. Is there anybody either in the room or on Zoom that wishes to give comments on this one? All right, making my job easy. All right, uh, now we have the proposed, uh, the reading of proposed rule one nine nine zero five zero 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 eight five.
Training delegation and approval process. This rule provides guidance on the process for organizations seeking commission approval of their public meetings law training programs.
Are there any questions from the commission on this rule? Is there anyone wishing to give public comment?
Yes, we've got Bill.
All right, Mr. Urteil, uh, you have, uh, you're, you're, you're up. You have three minutes.
Hey, my name is Bill Urteil, and I live in Southern Oregon. Um, my comment on this is that I think it's, it's headed in the right direction. Uh, I think this, I'm reading the delegation. I belong to an organization and we subscribe to a, a umbrella organization called Special Districts. And to belong to Special Districts, if you're a board member, you have to go through this kind of training once a year. I'm, I'm thinking, looking through this, that if I would, would do it through my special districts training, it would fulfill the obligation. Or would there be a separate venue that I would, would go through the training? And I'm just looking at the regulation and my question would, would some of us be subject to duplicate training on the same subject matter during the year? Thank you.
So to answer your question, Mr. Urteil, we're not aiming to require any duplicate training. What this rule does is the statute provides that organizations can submit their trainings to the commission for approval, and that way anyone who takes an approved training from, for example, Special Districts Association, once that training's been approved by the commission, it would count and would satisfy the mandatory training requirements. And so the rule is written is simply to clarify that process and have the commission delegate to me as the director how to enact the training approval requirements.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, any, are there any questions from the commission? Anybody else, uh, either on Zoom or in the room wishing to make comment on the rule ending in zero zero eight five? All right, by my count, that gets us through all of the rules, and now we are on agenda item number thirty-four, which is a reading of the proposed statement of financial need or, or need and financial impact. So, uh, Susan.
Thank you. So as part of the rulemaking advisory committee, rule advisory committee process leading up to this hearing, a fiscal impact statement was presented. It was included in the rule notice. That fiscal impact statement indicates that the new and amended rules could have a fiscal impact because public bodies may incur costs in order to comply with the requirements of the public meetings law. But that fiscal impact arises from the statutes, not from the rules. The Rules Advisory Committee, a Rules Advisory Committee was appointed by the commission, and it met on July twenty-ninth to evaluate and recommend the fiscal impact statement. With a vote of five to four, the Rule Advisory Committee recommended approval of the fiscal impact statement.
Uh, are there any questions about what you just heard from Executive Director Myers? All right, with that, I believe, oh, go ahead.
We had several people registered for just general comments on the rules as a full.
Okay. Let's do that now.
Okay, um, the first one is Beth Woodard.
Beth Woodard, are you on?
I am. Good morning, Commissioners.
Please identify yourself for the record and we, your three minutes will start, uh, now.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Beth Woodard. I'm one of the deputy city attorneys for the city of Portland, and I was also a member of the advisory committee. Um, my comments were actually better suited probably to the first portion of this hearing, but I was double booked this morning, so I appreciate, um, taking these a bit out of order. The city will be providing detailed written testimony for today's record. I would just like to highlight a few of our primary areas of concern. As others have testified, we have significant concerns that these proposed rules exceed the narrow rulemaking authority granted to the commission and create new obligations for public bodies that do not appear in the statutes. The city's most significant concerns are centered around the rules relating to the u- the definitions, uh, related to the use of intermediaries and serial communications. Um, as you all may know, beginning in January of two thousand and twenty-five, Portland will move to its new form of government, which includes twelve council members, a mayor, a city administrator, and seven deputy city administrators. These proposed rules could significantly impact the abilities of these offices to work towards efficient governance. Elected staff serve critical functions for fact gathering, preliminary analysis, and briefing. Without the ability to openly communicate among staff, elected officials for a public body of any size could be unable to gather necessary information without a risk of violating these rules. And we would note in the city's review of public meetings law, it appears that these statutes and the proposed rules would also apply equally to the legislature. Finally, the fiscal and economic impact statement declares the rules do not create additional costs beyond what the statutes require. However, in our review, it appears the proposed rules will have additional economic impacts to public bodies, including the additional notice requirements, the executive session attendance requirements, and the additional potential litigation costs where the rules define common terms or supplant existing case law. With those high-level comments, uh, I want to thank everyone for their time this morning, and I hope you find our detailed written testimony useful in your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What, who else do we have signed up?
Uh, next up is Bill.
Mr. Urteil, uh, now is your time for general comments. If you have any, please, uh, reintroduce yourself and make them now.
Uh, my name is Bill Erdl of Southern Oregon. Uh, I have no further comments this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we have Jonathan.
Mr. Kara?
Is this just ge- general comments?
General comments, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, yes, I, I registered for this. I am just wanted to thank the commission for its time this morning and for the, uh, significant efforts that your rules writer and rules coordinator have been making with your Rules Advisory Committee over the past several months. Um, I've been, I'm not going to say attending those meetings, but I've been watching them on YouTube, um, at all hours of the day, and so, because they're quite long meetings. And so, um, I know that some members of your, uh, staff are cer- well, all members of your staff are certainly paid, but, uh, there are a lot of volunteers on that committee. And I just wanted to, uh, thank them for engaging in this public process. And I think, um, that the stakeholders that were involved it, you know, and represented by the rulemaking, uh, committee by the rack, um, I, I don't think you could have picked a better crowd. I think it, it took a whole wide range and the spectrum of people and interested parties. Um, I think that, um, your rules writer did a good job of ensuring that all voices were heard. Um, and I think that you have a lot to be proud of as a commission. With that said, I do have, you know, three objections to three small rules. Um, and I mentioned those earlier today. I'm more than happy to discuss my thoughts on these and to dive into a, a more interactive process with anybody. Um, my contact information's included on those slides, and my email, um, is listed there as well, so please feel free to reach out. I'm not paid to be here. I, I'm, I'm here because I, I think it's a, it's important for cities to get involved with this kind of thing. Um, I think counties, uh, are in the same boat. I think you've heard that from, uh, both Rob and Patty this morning. And, um, I just wanted to say thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here and offering your testimony as well.
We also have David Lichtenberg.
Mr. Lichtenberg, are you available? Are you on?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
All right, please introduce yourself for the record and, uh, we'll go from there.
Thank you. My name is David Lightenberg. I'm the city attorney for the city of McMinnville. I had not intended to, uh, provide any testimony this morning, but when I heard the eloquence of my colleagues, both city and county, uh, I wanted to just speak up and voice my support for the issues that were raised, um, especially those so clearly and articulately brought forth by Mr. Kara, um. Insofar as it adds any value, I would like to note that I support all of those points. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here today.
And that was the last one that we have registered.
All right, uh, Mr. Bovette has some, uh, general comments for us. We'll get a microphone down to him and then ask him to re-identify himself for the record in his three minutes starts now.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Rob Bovette, Senior Assistant County Counsel, uh, for Washington County on behalf of the county lawyers. Uh, we just to reiterate what you heard from, um, a city attorney, Lichtenberg, and a city attorney, Kara. Um, I, I have to admit that I was the, the person kind of responsible for generating that five-four vote at the rack. And I probably have to put on the record why that occurred. It really involves a particular sentence on, on page three of your packet, um, where, um, the, the, the report basically says generally, the rules themselves not create any additional cost beyond what the laws already require. I had proposed that we substitute for the words do not, the words are not intended to. So it would read generally the rules themselves are not intended to create any additional cost beyond what the laws already require. That resulted in the five-four split. Uh, my basis for that is exactly what you've heard, um, today. Um, the rules, in, in my opinion, and I think the opinion of, uh, some of the city attorneys you've heard from, exceed the scope of, uh, statutory requirements, uh, currently. And in fact fly in the face of, of statutory requirements, um, and legislative history. So therefore the rules actually do impose additional costs beyond what statutes require, and that's why I wanted to change those words. Um, that being said, I, I want to echo what, uh, Jonathan said, um, a staff, Susan and her staff have done an amazing job here. And I just want to thank and congratulate the commission for doing a fantastic job, even though we still have objections to a few rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to make comments? Oh, I see a hand from Ashley Driscoll. Think you're still muted. Ashley Driscoll, can you hear us? I see a hand, but I do not see a person or hear a person. All right, anybody else wishing to address the commission on these rules? Are there any final thoughts from commissioners? All right, with that, um, is there anything else we need to discuss?
No, I would just like to make a final comment. I appreciate the comments that Rob and, and Jonathan and everyone have said about the rulemaking process. Um, it was a big undertaking, obviously. Um, but realistically, we had a lot of meetings and Jonathan's right. While I and my staff are paid because we're here doing this work, all of those rule advisory committee members were volunteering for that, and it was Monday after Monday having to sit through three-hour meetings, sometimes longer. Um, so, one, I really do appreciate the efforts they made and the efforts they made contributed to making the rules better. They absolutely did. It was the feedback from the rule advisory committee members that enabled us to revise and fine-tune. We may not have gotten everything that everyone wanted, but the rules were made better by the suggestion and the assistance of the rack members. So thank you to them.
All right. Well, thank you to everyone who participated in this process. Uh, it is, uh, as Susan said, a big undertaking. I will remind folks that the last day, uh, and time to offer comment to the agency is September third at five P M. So we look forward to getting those comments and reviewing them. And we will keep you posted as to next steps. And with that, uh, thank you, commissioners. Thank you for everyone who showed up to watch us and provide comment. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take care, everyone.